All rise. Here ye, here ye, the Hamlin County Commission is now in session. The Honorable Bobby Haun presiding. Please remain standing.
I want to wish everyone a good evening and welcome to the Hamlin County Legislative Body for this May 22, 2025. We'll start off by asking the Honorable Joe Huntsman to lead us in prayer.
Father Rees said, "Trust in the Lord in all your, with all your heart, and he will acknowledge you and he will make your paths straight." That is right. Father, as you have, our county is not a big city county and doesn't have the resources of larger counties. I pray for our county commissioners to seek and to make a budget. We face more needs than we have money to hand. And we have to make difficult choices that we may have to wait for after prioritize and wait until next year. We pray to work together to bring new business into our county, new jobs and income. Help us all see the big picture. We pray for all that we serve in our local community. We strengthen them, us, and we ask for wisdom, merit, and grace. Help us to keep our eyes toward the Lord in everything we do and that we can work in the best interest of the people who also serve us. Guide us in all we do. I pray all these things in the name of the Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen. We'll now call on the Honorable Rodney Long to lead us in the pledge.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. We'll do a roll call, commissioners. We have a quorum. We'll begin. While he's retrieving the sign-in sheet, I will ask that everyone in attendance, please mute your phones. Commissioners, please turn your mics on. And with that said, we ask that anyone coming to the podium, the mic is real easy to adjust, so if you're a little shorter, a little taller, you know, and speak into the mic so it can be picked up on the recording. And commissioners, if you'll do likewise with your mic. Keep in mind, we operate under Robert's Rules of Order unless local rules do supersede. We'll now move down to our public speaking. On non-agenda items, I have one person signed up, and that will be Charles Cook. Just come to the podium.
Good evening. So I want to talk to you about the proposed vote centers, the convenient vote centers. It's been, basically, it's been proposed by unelected people across the state that are affecting these counties. Now, when I say unelected, these people are appointed to this election commission, okay? So the people can't hold them accountable if things go wrong. But you guys vote for this, and that's where the frustration's going to come when things go bad. So I've talked and I've sent videos to every one of you guys, folks, by email to watch. The Tennessee Voters for Election Integrity and Tennessee Fair Elections are all against vote centers. They're no good. Frank Lempus from the Tennessee Voter Integrity Group lives in Williamson County. He is a poll worker down there. He has seen what they've done down there. They've created lower turnout because less precincts, less places to vote, longer lines. People are busy. If they don't vote early, they go to the polls, the lines are long, they move on. They gotta pick up their kids, they gotta go to the ballgame, whatever. That's on Election Day, okay? You can see that if you watch the video. Director of National Intelligence, Tulsa Gabbert, said just a month ago in an interview at the White House with the President that electronic voting machines are vulnerable to hackers, and they are looking to do national elections on paper ballots, okay? So who's up, if you do this next year, who's up first time elections? Everyone in the county offices, your primaries are the first one. It's going to be the guinea pigs, okay? So you folks need to look at this and really study on it before we implement this because it's going to cause problems. People don't like change. People don't like to early vote. They like to go to their precincts. It's not going in well. Thank you.
We do appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anyone else on non-agenda items? You don't have to be signed up to speak. We will ask for your name and address when you come to the mic if you did not sign up. But anyone else on non-agenda items?
London Oe, Joe Stevens Road. I'd like to talk about rules. We keep hearing them just about every meeting. Somebody will say, "We gotta follow the rule," and somebody else will say, "Well, what about this rule and that rule?" Well, how about all the rules? How about all the rules? How about let's have our Rules Committee meet again and go back and assemble the rules we already have? That was voted on. That was supposed to be done, and here we are, two, three years later, and we don't have that compilation of the Hamlin County rules. How about have a session with your county attorney, or you could probably get somebody from C-TAS to come, or Charlie Curtis, on open meetings and open records? And maybe that would help avoid situations as we've had recently with people denying records to members of the public or people conducting meetings without public notice. This shouldn't keep happening. And I think primarily, again, like so many things, it's a lack of understanding, a lack of it being explained. So have a session. We're having all these work sessions and committee meetings about a one, two-hour session on open records and open meetings. And again, when talking about rules, I'd like you to consider allowing people to have a cellphone. You know how big they are. And be able to tape the portions of the meeting that they want to tape. I know, I know we have a tape here. I was involved in having that installed 23 years ago, 21 years ago. We even had it donated. Open government is extremely important, and there's no reason not to let people tape a meeting. And the last thing I want to say, there was a lawsuit over placards. It was settled. The county insurance provider had to pay $10,000 to the attorney for the plaintiffs. And I remember one person, it was Mr. Cutshaw, he said, all he wanted to know was what a placard is. We still don't have any definition of a placard.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else on non-agenda items? Move down to our agenda items. Have one sign up, Mr. John Cox. Let me ask you this, is this about the nomination? Okay, you're going to have a chance, okay, when we get to that, just, just in a minute, so that way we don't have redundancy. Is that okay? Anyone else on agenda items?
London Oe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road, Joe Stevens Road. On agenda items, I would like to talk on what Mr. John Cox was going to talk on. Your nomination and appointment for the, to replace Mr. Bell on the, as the District Nine Commissioner. I hope, as you consider this, and as you listen to Mr. John Cox or anyone else who speaks about it, that you will give serious consideration to supporting someone who has been attending your meetings for the past year at least. Someone who has already shown an interest and a concern for the county. This is an important seat. This will be for over, probably over a year, depends on when the primaries are. Of course, they won't take office till, until September 1st of 2026. But whoever you point now will be here for a year and five months or so. That's an important position, and it needs to be somebody who is familiar with and who has shown interest and who has attended meetings, not just suddenly coming to some meetings when there's an opening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak on agenda items? Please state your name and address.
My name's Justin Anderson, and my address is 3121 Three Springs Road. I'm speaking on the nomination. I guess it's time to do that right now.
Are you nominating yourself?
No.
Okay.
No. I'm supporting Mr. John Cox. I've known him now for about 22 years, and he is not my birth father, obviously, but he is my dad. And he's my dad because he chose to be my dad. And I've learned more from him about how to live life with dignity and integrity and honesty and respect and compassion for others than I have anyone else, like all the other people combined. I mean, he has just taught me and molded me into the man that I am today. He was an excellent addition to my life, and I do believe he would be an excellent addition to this commission. He does come to these meetings religiously. I come three or four times a year. And not only does he come, but he gets here way too early. It drives me crazy, you know, like we live 15 minutes away, and he's like, "We gotta, we gotta leave at four o'clock," you know? And, you know, we're sitting in Parkland at 4:20, and, but he shows up early, he stays late. I've heard him address this commission, and he does it so respectfully. Even when he disagrees, he tries to find common ground on things. It's just a wonderful, wonderful man. And I don't know how many of you all have had an opportunity to just chat with him, but you would learn all the things that I've said rather quickly about him. You would learn them in person. I know that he doesn't need this job. I mean, there's not, you know, income really, you know, a large salary or anything. But he took a, a strong interest in this community after he moved here, and it's just grown by the day ever since. And I do believe that he would make an excellent commissioner, and I encourage you all to consider. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Have anyone else that wishes to address an agenda item? We'll close our public comments. Move down, excuse me, to item three. The floor is now open for nominations for District Nine Commissioner appointment. Have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mike John Cox.
We have Mike John Cox nominated.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Jamie Cardon.
Jamie Cardon.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'd like to nominate Kim Coffey.
Is she in attendance tonight?
She'll be here just in a little bit. She's running late from the Sheriff's Department. She's working, but she'll be here.
Do we have anyone else, any other nominations? Okay, the way this will work, we will vote. It's a simple majority. We'll vote one round. The other three, the lowest, that lowest vote getter is eliminated, and then we'll vote the runoff for the top two. It'll take seven votes to win, and that person will be elected and sworn in to office. Okay? Any questions? Again, you have Mike John Cox, Jamie Cardon, or Cardon, and Kim Coffey. Okay? So we'll do a roll call?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One second. If you want to do that, you might want to wait till Ms. Coffey's in attendance because unless there's a letter to accept that in her absence, you may want to delay action. Ms. Green, Commissioner Green indicates she's on her way, except to this body, but you can't vote on somebody by rule without them in attendance.
There she is.
All right, there you go. It's all moot point.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Coffey, you've been nominated for District Nine Commission. Do you accept that nomination? All right, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, roll call. Just simply say one of the three names. Oh, I'm so, I apologize. We don't, we don't, do you wish to say anything, Ms. Coffey? Yes, please. Just for the mic, it's hard to pick up if we don't.
Amen.
Kim Coffey, I was born and raised here. I've helped people my entire life. I've been in a, in a job of service. I've worked at Matt's as a case manager. I've been a bail bondsman. I've been a CASA advocate. I've worked with juvenile justice for 15 years. I'm now with adult justice and I'm helping with getting all the ICE stuff together, which is kind of a headache, but we're getting it done. And I just feel that I live in a community that I want to help. I want, I want changes. I want, you know, I have a lot of elderly people in my neck of the woods. I also have, a lot of them are farmers. It's agriculture up there there for a lot of us. So I just, I want to be a difference. I want to be a solution to a problem.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. John Cox, you did, and jump up there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had forgotten about that.
Hello, commissioners. I want to take the, well, there wasn't three minutes to touch base with a few I haven't been able to talk with about my willingness to stand for the appointment of the District Nine Commissioner's seat. I first got involved with county commission meetings during the COVID period as I saw a group protesting the Jail Justice Center while driving through Whitesburg. And nobody I knew in my area had a clue what was going on and could answer me. Since then, I've attended about 90% of all meetings. Now, my local friends ask me what is going on county-wise, and I answer as best I can. I respectfully watched, listened, and have spoken at the mic when I felt I had something to say and support both pro or con on agenda items. I may not have agreed totally with items as presented and offered other ideas to compromise. One point was the wheel tax, and my suggestion was brought forth as an amendment to it for motorcycle riders, but it was shot down as a whole. My motto is, "We agree to disagree when working with others." I feel I am able to look at all sides of an issue and vote my conscience and hopefully with my district and county's best intentions. My work resume is short. As I started factory work in my senior year of high school to purchase my car and motorcycle on my own, there were massive layoffs in 1975, so I enlisted in the Navy and was honorably discharged four years later, specializing in shipboard repairs, a second-class petty officer. I come from a family business where my dad owned two campgrounds, one in New York, the other in Virginia, which I was the owner-operator from 1981 until I sold and retired in 2018. What I was taught was basically, you don't spend more than you bring in. And while I was in the camping industry, I was on the Virginia Campground Owners Board of Directors for 12 years, which included working within our state budget for it. Two years before we retired, my wife and I spent looking where to live. We knew that we wanted to move somewhere in the area of Kentucky, Virginia, North Carolina, and Tennessee. We wanted to be about two, two, three hours from our grandchildren. We were shown many places in the local area for a year, and when we visited our place in Whitesburg, we knew it was where we wanted it to be, our last residence out in the country, yet close enough to stores. I'm for the rural lifestyle in District Nine with a strong desire for landowners' rights, keeping the farmland and cattle in our area. But I do realize that with growth comes expenses, and since we live on a retirement budget, just like all the families here working and raising children, the need to not be overtaxed and burdened. My vow with the plan is to help keep the tax base reasonable without a massive increase while supporting our county services we receive. I know it's not popular, but the reality is, we need to be willing to take care of our county expenses now. And I appreciate everybody that got back with me and the ones that I couldn't connect with. I hope you read the, the emails and messages that I sent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, good luck. Oh, there he is. I was looking for you. Okay, Mr. Cardon, come up and...
My name is Jamie Cardon. I put my name in the hat also for the Commissioner Nine seat. I live in, on Pullen Road in Whitesburg. I've lived there since 2001. I'm an import from Carter County where there's 23 commissioners, so I'm familiar with the numbers and things. But my, I've been here for a while. I've been involved in a lot of community events and things, and my job has taken me to places this almost monthly, honestly. I'm a civil engineer. I'm part owner of a company of about 180 people. We operate across three different states, and I'm in board meetings pretty frequently with managers, utility directors, board members to discuss some policies, just like tonight, for large expenses and maybe not enough income coming in, helping them set rates, if you will, doing those different things. And I know our county has a, a lot of things maybe unfortunately coming up for the things that are happening because of COVID and things have changed drastically. Again, my job has kind of put me on the forefront of that. I've been used to doing that for a while, and I've had a lot of, I say, civic involvement locally. I've worked at the City of Moorestown Engineering Department for a while. I was manager at Russellville Whitesburg Utility for seven years. Been my employer for 10-plus years. I've worked at T-Dot, worked for different places, doing different things. So my job has, again, led me to places like this pretty frequently and, and had to make hard decisions with things. And I think there's unfortunately harder decisions coming for our county, whether I'm appointed tonight or not. And I felt like this is an opportunity to, not just for my family, but for those of the residents we've got to kind of look at things that are happening and maybe make those hard calls that we don't want to say out loud properly. But it, it is a big deal. I have three sons. One's a graduate, also a civil engineer graduate just recently. I have a son that's graduating maybe in a year from Union College. He's working in construction right now. I have a sophomore at Moorestown East High School. All my kids have been at Whitesburg and East Ridge, and I'm one of the co-founders of the middle school baseball team. I've kept that active because we have, we'd have that huge lack. I've been a, an umpire and coach in Little League for 15, 16 years, so I feel like I've been involved. Whether maybe I've not been at every meeting, but I have things that have kind of put me in front of things to know what's happening each and every time. I'm proud to be here. I may be of Carter County by birth, but I've been here almost as long as I've lived in Carter County. So I'm glad, I'm glad to be here. Don't plan on being anywhere different, and I appreciate your considerations.
Thank you very much, and we wish you well. We're going to call the roll again. We have Mike John Cox, we have Jamie Cardon, and we have Kim Coffey. If you would call one of those three names, we'll proceed.
Dottie Avern?
Jamie Cardon.
Hello, Ms. Dottie?
Jamie Cardon.
Edna Green?
Kim Coffey.
Stan Harwell?
Mike John Cox.
Bobby Vaughn?
Jamie Cardon.
Tim Horner?
Jamie Cardon.
Joe Huntsman?
Jamie Cardon.
Peggy Howell?
Mike John Cox.
Rodney Wong?
Jamie Cardon.
Mike Reed?
Jamie Cardon.
Mike Richardson?
Jamie Cardon.
Wayne Neese?
Kim Coffey.
Kyle Walker.
Jamie Cardon.
So we have a tie for second place. But we have a vast majority. The vote comes out to nine for Mr. Cardon, two each for Mr. John Cox. So be Mr. Cardon, okay? We thank you guys, Mr. John Cox, Ms. Coffey, for your interest. We appreciate your support going forward and all that you do for this county. Mr. Cardon, if you'll step into the well, you will be sworn in by our mayor, Chris Cutshaw. All right, if you will.
All right, if you will, place your right hand on the Bible, please. If y'all want to switch around where it's not awkward.
That's all right, we're good.
All right. I, Jamie Carden...
I, Jamie Carden.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity...
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the office of which I have been elected.
The duties of the office in which I have been elected.
And which I am about to assume.
And which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions of Tennessee...
To support the constitutions of Tennessee.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And to faithfully perform...
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
Of County Commissioner representing the ninth district.
The County Commissioner representing District Nine.
Of Hammond County, Tennessee.
Of Hammond County, Tennessee.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Carden? You brought in the fire.
You're welcome, dear brother.
This is for Trish.
Chris. Hey, Chris.
Carden, you do know you are obligated to take us all out to dinner afterwards. Hey. And, Mr. Carden, if you run into any questions or glitches, you're sitting beside two fine gentlemen. They can answer. Come to me or anyone else. We'll be glad to...
Are you moving me?
Yeah. Glad to have you aboard. All right, let's move on down to, uh... Item four, Calendar Rules Committee report. Chairman Thomas Doughty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have item 4A, which is the approval of the consent calendar items. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Let's vote the motion. Or any questions, I'm sorry.
Please.
Yes.
I'd like to see the camper issue removed from adopting that record till we get some clarification. I was here for that vote, and don't take this the wrong way. I was confused as the devil as to what we did and did not do, and I'd like to see it pulled and some clarification before it's adopted.
What exactly do you reference it in?
Well, for one thing, it came in as draft five. If I remember correctly, and you can, you can straighten me out if I'm wrong, I think we split it. I may be wrong, but I'm thinking we split it for a vote.
And then I pulled that out, and we voted for it off.
Yeah. So, I, I, it does not, to me, it needs some clarification. That's just my thoughts, sir.
Mayor, will you address this?
Ms. Green has a right to remove anything on the consent calendar and take it to item, the next item after that. What is it, number five, I think? Yes, item five, and this body can take up that, that point right there and vote it in or out, up or down on that point of number five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, we'll move the camper vote to item five, camper RV. For clarification.
For clarification, I think she's pointing to the minutes. Is that what you're referring to?
I read the minutes, yes, sir, and they didn't make a bit more sense to me, and I was here.
I'm just saying, that's what you're moving to, item five is the minutes, correct?
Is the minutes and exactly what we voted on for clarification, please.
It's the body of the minutes, though.
Well, it needs clarification. Let me clarify what I stated.
So, you're wanting the minutes clarified, is that...
I want to know exactly what we voted to put in there, because the way the minutes are written, it's confusing to me. I don't know about the rest of you, but I was here, and I was confused.
We'll address that in item five.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Doughty?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Neesmith.
I thought we was over on the rental agreement. My numbers are different from somebody else's then. Diverse computing, computer system for the Sheriff's Department.
Are you under item four?
No, they... Oh, you're on approval of consent.
Yes.
Hey, I thought you didn't pass it all the way down to the other.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
My excuse. Anyone else? Okay, no questions? We'll vote the motion. Our, excuse me, I guess we'll be voting. Do we need to vote to move that down, or it's just by request, isn't it?
Yes, it's automatically moved.
By request, okay.
Once it's requested, you put it on our side, and you can take it up there.
Thank you, sir.
Rudolph the boy.
Mr. Doughty? We are voting, yes.
Motion passes.
Have item 4B, approval of the regular calendar items, and we have quite a few additions. Everyone should have had a copy at their station on this. First addition is 9B, which updated construction contract between Hammond County and Construction Partners LLC. Item 9C is updated equipment rental agreement, diverse computing with indemnification clause removed. And now to item 9E-4, which is budget amendment. Budget amendment number four is Fund 101, drug court expansion with public safety grants of $183,060. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions or comments?
I have one question.
Ms. Green?
I'm on the right path. We will still have the opportunity to discuss that rental contract with the Sheriff's Department, I'm assuming, under finance, sir. Thank you, sir.
Yes, it just approves it being on the calendar.
Any other questions? Let's vote the motion. Motion passes.
So, ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. Move down to item five. Any items removed from the consent calendar?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Long.
Can I ask a question? We moved that to number five, but Commissioner Green asked for it to be moved and then voted against moving it. Can that be explained to me?
I don't think I have to give you an explanation, do I?
Well, you voted not to move it, so why did you ask to move it?
I, I asked to move it for the simple fact, when I read the minutes, and I was sure when that vote was taken, it did not make sense to me, sir. And above that, I have no explanation for you, sir.
I understand that, but you voted not to move it.
I know how I voted, sir, and that's my right, I think.
So, why are we even addressing it?
Under, under the rules, I think, that we go by, it was supposed to be moved if it was requested. Maybe we've changed those rules again.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and County Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the vote was not to remove to item five. It was the approval of such. Just the request automatically removes it. That is not something that's up for vote at any time on that. Any Commissioner can request an item be removed from the consent calendar, and it is automatically removed. And then, after that, the vote was just on the approval of such.
Thank you.
We do need a, we do need a motion for number five.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, Ms. Green. Do we have a second? We have a second, Ms. Howell. Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right, let's vote the motion.
I think Ms. Green's request to speak.
All right, Ms. Green.
That needs to be clear enough whether it's enforceable, and the way that it reads, it's confusing. And I don't have a legal mind, and I'll be the first to tell you that. But honestly, I think your county attorney needs to look at that before we adopt it. That's just my thoughts. That's what we paying for. At least, I think that's what we paying for.
Let's vote the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Howell, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to do the last half second. I guess what we're, the vote concerns is just an explanation of, a clarification of that camper issue. Just a clarification. Okay, am I, am I right?
We have to talk to Ms. Green about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Ahearn.
I'm sorry for my confusion, but I'm a little confused on what I'm voting for now. Am I voting for to remove the item that Ms. Green has placed before us or accepting that, what she's put before us?
No, she's asking to have it removed.
So, I'm voting for that. Yes to have it removed?
Yes. Because it's not, it's not clear enough. So, she's asking, because she doesn't see it as being clear enough, she wants it removed.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? Let's vote, let's vote the motion. All right, motion is rejected. Move down to item six, approval of the consent calendar. We have a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, Mr. Doughty. We have a second. Mr. Horner, any questions or comments? Let's vote the motion.
Will be eight to nine.
Motion passes. Down to item seven. We will now recess as the Hammond County legislative body and convene as the Hammond County Beer Board. We have a beer permit for H&M Food Mart, Mr. Patel, at 4550 Inca Highway, Moorestown, Tennessee, 37813. Anyone wish to speak on this? Okay, okay. Commissioners? We will reconvene as the Hammond County legislative body, taking into consideration the beer permit for H&M Food Mart, Mr. Patel, 4450 Inca Highway, Moorestown, Tennessee, 37813. I need a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion. Uh, we have a motion...
Mr. Horner.
Mr. Horner, do I have a second? Mr. Richardson, do I have a second? Mr. Carden, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to make a point. Just being newly elected, I have reviewed the documents from the previous meetings on the following items, starting with this one, so I do feel confident enough to vote.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Let's vote the motion. Motion passes. Now move down to item nine, our Finance Committee. I'll call on Chairman Rodney Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Start with 9A, funding year 25 Homeland Security Grant application. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. And we have a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Let's vote the motion. And vote, uh, motion passes.
Move to 9B, construction contract between the Hammond County Government and Construction Partners LLC. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Long, Mr. Horner, any questions or comments? Vote the motion.
I meant to ask the question, but I guess it's too late. I just want to know, is this for the health of the partner?
Yes.
Okay, we need to specify that on here. I couldn't figure out what it was.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Move to 9C, is equipment rental agreement, diverse computing with the identification clause removed. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion, Mr. Long. We have a second, Ms. Ahearn. Any questions? Let's vote the motion. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Green.
If you'll go back to the new sheet that we have, under page one, number six, we've got a confidentiality clause in there. Under open records for Tennessee, we can't do that. They covered that in our training in nice, in Gatlinburg. We cannot sign anything, because if someone wants to do an open record request, a record request, they have that right. We're a government. We're not a private agency. I would ask that that's pulled and corrected for the safety of Hammond County, or at least something added to cover Hammond County. And somebody needs to be reading those contracts. Did you find it, Bobby?
Mr. Mayor, can you address this?
I cannot. I'm not certain of the implications of that at all.
What page did you say that was on?
It's the one that, that was on my desk. It's under authorized person. It's got six and parentheses out front it, but it's the first page. Mr. Chairman?
Number eight, confidential, move.
Number six. I think it says confidential in number six, and it also covers it in number eight. And we can't do that confidentiality and abide by the open records laws in Tennessee. Thank you, Peggy, for the clarification. I looked at the wrong one when I was hunting it.
Yes, sir.
Just, just what we think that some of this confidential information is by federal law. It's not allowed to be released. And that, that is the, what, what we're hearing. And I think that's, uh, that's standard on this one. Obviously, what Commissioner Green is bringing up, if there is an open records request for such items, if it's not redacted by federal law or something, that, that will be provided, obviously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Howell?
Mr. Doty.
Mr. Doty, I'm sorry.
Where I'm reading this is merely in articles related to definitions. Some of the definition of such, which to me looks like just a form, uh, form section. Have you found it somewhere in the actual agreement, Ms. Green, or just under the definitions?
It's under that, and it's in the agreement.
Or is it at in the agreement? Because I've only found it on, that first page is only under definitions. If you'll move back over to, to the left slightly, where it says Article One, recitals and definitions is all that is.
That is a definition, but it says to keep it confidential.
So maybe that's only given the definition. Is it somewhere in the actual contract?
I did not get on down in there when I caught that one, and what they had given us down there, when it wanted to stay confidential, it hit a nerve from what they had taught us down there. And hold on, let's see. Bear with me, let me mention it.
I am not an attorney by, by trade or anything, but I've read over this, and I don't.
It's in number eight.
I think we're good. Let's, let's move on. Uh, Ms. Howell, do you need to speak?
Well, um, yes, sir, thank you. Maybe we should just put this on for next time. And just, uh, our attorney is it here?
I think we got clarification on it. I think, I think we're okay to move forward. Okay? Mr. Richardson?
In section eight oh two, it talks about confidential information, and then eight oh three is talking about trade secrets. And basically, this is information that they had developed that we're the end user licensing agent, I guess, or they're the agent, we're the licensee. And we can give them any information that we have concerning our operations of this, but the trade secrets and, you know, the, like, how do you make Cracker Barrels, you know?
We all want to know.
Yeah, we all want to know stuff like that, but this is a license agreement and trade secret stuff. But I think that that's what we're asking for is, in our contract, we can give them, if they require a, a records request, we can give them that, but we just don't know what the trade secret is, and how it's op, their operating system. It's like Microsoft three sixty-five, or, you know, any of these things. We just don't have that information.
We thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Ms. Green?
I don't have a legal mind, but I do think to protect the county, considering our mayor found the clause that he found on the Health Department, we owe it to the citizens of Hammond County to have the attorney check it. And it's not going to make that much difference coming for the next session. We need to protect our citizens above all else.
Mr. Mayor, you weigh in?
I think it's, uh, Mr. Richardson gave the, the proper point, as well as, uh, Sheriff's Department staff has indicated that that, that's what it is. We, there's certain information that can be shared. Anything that would possibly be shared on our behalf would obviously be there.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's vote to motion. Motion passes.
Move to nine D, opioid abatement committee funding recommendation, third judiciary district recovery court support services for twenty thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars for the diary program. And I do put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, Mr. Long. We have a second from Mr. Doty, Mr. Neesmith.
I didn't get those figures on what it is for the, uh, diverse corporation than what it was for the firepower rental. What's the total dollar we're looking at on that?
Would you restate your question?
Yeah.
What's the total dollar we're looking for to, when we go to diverse computer CDI? What is our dollar figure we're looking at for rental, and also for the, uh, the software? If, if we look in our, in our program, the first, first thing I saw some money come out was, uh, it's in the old one. I got it here. It won't take me long to find it. I think it was ten thousand five hundred dollars. And then when we go to Firestick, fire, firepower is twenty-five hundred dollars plus five hundred. But I just want to know what the full bill on this is. And then I've got another question relating to this, to why are we, why are we going to this new computer system? Didn't our old computer system, I've heard some things back and forth on it. I don't know who will speak on Sheriff's Department, but, uh, Catimus, I think, was the system that we had in place. And I think Catimus was when people would, when officers would come to the jail to check on inmates, the Catimus system, that system was on the outside of the cells. And then this new system, when an officer comes by, it's on the new, inside the jail cells. And the two can't work, you can't, you can't use them both. Okay, I understand. We're, we're on item D, the opioid abatement committee. Item D, I don't hate saying item D. Okay, because we ain't got out our two yet then, right?
No, we done passed it.
Give us something to think about till we get there. Why are we doing this new system?
Let's get D taken care of. Thank you, Mr. Neesmith. Anyone else? All right, let's vote to motion.
You did ask for questions, right? Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's afterwards. I apologize.
Did you vote on it? I didn't.
We're voting.
You didn't vote on that, have you?
Mr. Neesmith, you need to vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I understood, after moving a second, weren't we supposed to have the time to ask questions? Or did I miss something, darling? I'm the opioid?
I did.
Okay, I missed it, then. I apologize.
I'm sorry, uh, but I did. And this motion passes. Mr. Long?
We move to nine E, budget amendment. We'll start with number one. The First Amendment is Hammond County Department of Education Budget Amendment number eight, increase of one million, four hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, Mr. Long. We have a second, Mr. Doty. Any questions? Okay, let's vote to motion. And the motion passes.
Go to E two. Fund one oh one, civil defense for five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, Mr. Long. We have a second, Mr. Harville. Any questions? Vote to motion. Motion passes.
E three, fund one oh one, transfer out of one hundred and sixty-six thousand and twenty-four dollars. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, Mr. Long. We have a second, Mr. Horner. Any questions? Vote to motion. And this motion passes.
We have E four, fund one oh one, drug court expansion, public safety grant of one hundred and eighty-three thousand and sixty dollars, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, Mr. Long. We need a, need a verbal second. Mr. Doty, thank you very much. Do we have any comments or questions about this? Call the robe, Madam Clerk.
Debbie Ahearn?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Dan Harvill?
Yes.
Bobby Holland?
Yes.
Peggy Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Dowell?
Yes.
Robbie Wong?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Tyler Locke?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Long. That motion does pass. Uh, item ten, we've got some things coming up. Our committee meetings will be, uh, June sixteenth at five o'clock, right here. Our full commission meeting will be Thursday, June twenty-sixth at five o'clock in this room. And then keep in mind, on June twelfth, at five o'clock, we have a budget meeting, and it'll also be right here. Okay? Just a couple of things to kind of wrap up. Uh, I know Ms. Noys had some concerns about the rules and the compilation of the rules and whatnot, and that is something that's being worked on at this time. And, uh, I don't know about the open records, what problems that we've had there. But we are looking into the compilation of the rules. And without hiring another staff member to do this, at the expense of the county, it's been, uh, Ms. Bowman, Ms. Trish, she's been taking this on herself to try to pull this together. That's one of her projects. Uh, we've addressed the iPhone taping of the commission meetings. We've ruled against that, and that will not be allowed at this time. I will ask, as we have no updates, Mr. Sheriff? None of them. Captain David Kribley is, as we speak, in surgery. If you don't know about his situation, he's at Duke University, is in surgery at this time. It's not eminently life-threatening, but it's very serious. And we do ask that each of you pray that he'll be blessed with full recovery. Uh, he's, he's a newlywed, just got married on Saturday. And, uh, you know, I love the guy dearly. I know a lot of you do, so please keep that in mind. We're going to take a short recess, and then we're going to come back for the sheriff's budget. We are adjourned.
Oh, you're fine, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, we do, we do. Wasn't on there, but I knew it wasn't on there.
Nice stab out there, Stan.
What's that?
Yeah, it's just been a thing.
I visit the lost circus, it's usually during the month, so. Yeah, I know. That is funny. Yeah, I know. That is funny.
They're leaving alone.
Thomas, we're going to come through with these bags, all right? Sorry. Thomas, we're going to come through with these bags here.
Ma'am?
By the way, this is yours, so I can keep it until after two. It's a potty break.
They latch you back into that.
Is Tennessee playing Texas?
We don't finish closing, we don't have any.
I don't know what a movie is, give it a thought.
Hidden gift, I didn't even know.
Well, we didn't have to buy them. We did a superb job. Well, we're blessed to help. Yes, yes, I'm sure.
That's Bobby's. That's Bobby's stuff here.
Oh, well, that's because I had to borrow my jacket and his jacket.
Hey, Joe, want to say thank you to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, so. Good bag, we got to talk. Who is we? Right by young tree, you can keep me up on that most of the time.
That was good.
That was good.
Started your best picture. Started our best picture. So we'll be still in it again.
All right. I assume that one is in here. I don't know.
I'm talking about Tennessee. That's Texas picture there. Bring another one in, yeah.
Guess I'll see you more often now.
I'm sure you will. I just hope you're not my opposition each time.
All right, that's all right.
I'm a firm believer in working for the taxpayers, Johnny, not the click.
Nothing wrong with that.
Not the click. Way to be interesting to see. Okay, I did put one in. All righty. God, my barrier.
I'm going to make this quick, I've got to go to dinner with my daughter.
Oh, well, if in the case, in that case. Wait a minute, this is important. This is important. Wonder if that includes the twenty-three they say were short. Are everybody on base? Come on, we need one. My granddaughter's team, okay? On the team is the third base coach, assistant coach to UT, his daughter. So they're on the same, her name is AJ. And I mean, in fact, I just saw, because I was at awards day.
Where was this?
St. Joseph's. And, um. Yeah, yeah, they've been adding. They've got, should have been questioned if he worked there.
I talked to Sheriff and the captain.
Yeah.
I don't know what that total price is going to be on that campus.
Oh, I'm sure they don't.
Is Dan?
Sure they don't.
I can hardly, I vote, you know, I can't know them something unless I know what it's going to cost.
I just wish we were like Scott County. We got it ten days in advance to give us time to go over it. But that'll never happen until the commission changes.
Is it resolved from roughly third? It was on. Yeah. It was green.
Well, I guess I have. You do realize I signed in that person.
I wish, I wish. Yes, apparel marks.
I don't think.
Small apparel marks.
Call the budget committee meeting Thursday, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five to order, please. Is anyone wishing to address the committee at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to three A, old business, and we do not have any. We will move now to new business. We will start with courtroom security, and that'll be tab thirty-two.
Well, let me say first, if I may, if you're asking, well, why is she up there talking? Well, first off, it's because I asked him if I could, but more so because Captain Kribley is not able to be here with us tonight. You'll notice in front of you, I'm sure you've already started looking at them, I know you've got your budget notebooks, but I've also given you a handout that's going to cover exactly what we're talking about. It coincides with your notebooks, so it's got the tab listed, and it's color-coded with what the sheriff and I have. So hopefully, we can all follow along, be on the same page. Do you may have any questions?
I have one. Thank you. It was a smile. I couldn't read it, so thank you.
We're all in the same age bracket. We understand.
I doubt that.
If you guys are ready, we'll go ahead and get started with this. So basically, as you know, there are seven budgets that fall under the heading of the Hamlin County Sheriff's Office. Now, since two thousand twenty-two, when Sheriff Mullins went into office, we have asked for minimal operational increases in those budgets. Actually, on a lot of those line items, over that timeframe, there have been decreases, including in this year's budget. Now, actually, we have been able to limit our spending since two thousand twenty-two for supplies, for training, for travel, for equipment, including big equipment, as well as things for the jail, for the new justice center, including a brand-new transport vehicle. We've been able to secure all that because of grants. We've gotten grants to the tune of, what, more than half a million dollars? As a matter of fact, this year, we've already applied for, I hate this thing, I can talk without it, but this year, we've already applied for and been approved for another ten thousand dollar grant. It is a non-matching THSO grant, which is Tennessee Highway Safety Office. What we're going to use this money for, we're going to use it for equipment, and it's also going to be for overtime that we do for traffic enforcement. Now, talking about this year's budgets, the upcoming year, well, this year, actually, of those seven budgets, two of those, we are asking for no operational increase at all. Two of those budgets, we are simply asking for one operational increase in each of those. And for the other three, we're asking for those operational increases, but it has nothing to do with us. Totally out of our control. It's due to maintenance agreement costs and also things associated with the new facility. So again, your handouts are going to coincide with your tabs. They're also color-coded, so if you guys are ready, shall we just go ahead and jump into court security? Does anybody have any questions first? Let me ask that.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
In the past, I've watched your uniform allowance, and I've noticed it's not every officer. Will that change at some point to give every officer the opportunity to put in for that?
Say that again, uniform?
In the past, I've tracked your uniform allowance.
Okay.
I noticed that some get it, others, it doesn't seem to flow, for lack of a nicer word. So will that change and give everybody the opportunity? Because I'm assuming everybody needs new uniforms at some point or another.
Yes, okay. So if we can go ahead, if everybody's ready, we'll go ahead and jump into court security. I think, first thing, before we start this, though, I think people don't understand that court security actually encompasses more than just court security. These officers, they do mental health transports, they do inmate transports. If somebody has an outstanding warrant, they turn themselves in. Our court security officers are the one that do the arrests. If somebody comes in and needs a report written up, we don't pull folks off the street. We use our court security officers to do that. Now, of course, they do maintain the safety of the courthouse and the justice center, and they do maintain the safety in the courtrooms between these two entities. But they also do out-of-state inmate travels. Just last week, we had two gentlemen that went to Cali, Florida to pick up an inmate. Now, they also, of course, are responsible for bringing the inmates back and forth from the jail to all the different courts. And if there is a day when there's not court happening, court security officers go out and serve warrants. So again, they, me personally, I think the title needs to be changed from court security to something totally different, because again, they do way more than just court security. Now, because of all the duties that fall under their responsibility, and because, for lack of better wording, because of the stretched-out size of the new justice center, for us to be able to effectively do what we need to do, we're going to need additional court security officers. Realistically, we need eight. But what we're going to do is ask you for four. Four full-time court security officers in the new year. Now, of course, with new staff, you know what comes along with that? Additional cost in uniforms, additional cost in testing. And when I say testing, these are psychiatric evaluations. They are required for all of our employees, post-certified employees. We're going to have to get new psychiatric testing, we're going to have to get new amounts for uniforms, for training, and for travel. Again, those things are out of our control. It just kind of goes along with having new personnel. Yes, ma'am.
What do you think each court security will cost you? What is the total you're looking at?
Are you talking about uniform-wise?
I'm talking uniform, training, everything, a year. What do you expect it to cost?
Well, they do a lot of other things, and I'll get into the cost in a little bit. They'll get four uniforms. They're not getting cars. We've got transport cars. So I can't give you an exact number of how much they'll cost with the benefit package and all that, but they'll start with the minimum pay, which is what I will address here in a little bit. But they also, they're all, the court security are post-certified police officers. They go through the police academy at Water State. They, after they get out of the police academy, they also go through two hundred and forty hours of training on patrol. They also serve order protections when they're not in court. They serve civil papers, and once they get their two hundred and forty hours, then they're eligible to go out and answer calls as well. So they wear a number of hats. And in the new facility, we're going to have an extra courtroom where they do arraignments only. They'll have to be sworn in there. Then we'll have a court holding area. We're going to have to have additional people there. We have to have at least two people in each court. We'll still be operating this building and that building. So exact number, I'd have to do the numbers on the uniforms. The academy is around thirty-five hundred dollars, I, give or take. And then there's a meal plan that comes with that, so I'd have to get you all the numbers.
How part figures, fifty, sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand?
I guess with the benefit package, I'd say around sixty thousand.
A year.
Commissioners, I would ask that us let Sheriff Shell go through this, and then we'll ask questions at the end. Just write your questions down that you need to ask one other time at the end of it.
Also, I wanted to say about our courtroom security, they also, last year, they done one hundred and seventy-seven mental transports. They're going to Chattanooga, we've got some in Memphis, we've got some in Johnson City, and we've got some in Knoxville. They also run a hundred and ninety-six inmate transports. So that could be going to the doctor, going to other counties and getting them, or going to Florida. I know we're going to have a hold on individuals, got a lot of time that's in New York. When he gets done there, we'll have to go to New York and pick him up. So court security, they wear a lot of hats and a lot of things they have to do out there.
And again, the point being, for us to be able to effectively do what we need to do now, and when we get in the new facility, we're going to need more. And as I mentioned earlier, and I know he can attest to it, we need eight realistically. But we'll go with four, and I guess we'll make it work.
There's a lot of times in criminal court right now, we've got a lot of medical transports or mental health transports. You'll see myself or the chief one in criminal court running inmates back and forth. It's a couple of words shorthand, because they're out doing transport.
Anybody have any other questions?
Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate the fact that in a perfect world, you want eight, and you'll be happy with four.
We're going to, not that we'll be happy, but we'll make it work.
Okay, good job. All right.
So what will, if everybody's good with court security, we're going to go on to what will be your tab thirty-three, which is going to be the actual sheriff's office. So with that, again, as I mentioned earlier, these operational increases, and again, let me stress, and I should have said this early on, these are solely operational increases. These have nothing to do with longevity, with insurance, with pay. These are just day-to-day things that we are going to have to have. Now, going into the sheriff's office, the only things that we are asking for under the maintenance agreements, we're going to have to have an increase on that. Again, that's out of our hands. That's because the contracts that we go with from year to year to year, there are increases. Perfect example with this one is our Pulsium contract. And the sheriff can speak more on that if you have questions, but Pulsium's going to go up. We're also going to have to add this software that we've had conversation about, this diverse computing. We have to have that software and that equipment to be able to do these NCIC checks. I mean, that we have to have that. There's an additional cost. And I think, I can't remember which of you two asked about the cost earlier. Or Mr. Neesmith? That was discussed in last month's committee meeting, or I don't know, maybe it was earlier this month on the twelfth. But the cost was discussed then, and I apologize, I don't have it off the top of my head right now. Point being, there's an additional cost. Also, we're going to have to have more money in that line item because of the LTE radios we're going to have to have. And again, the sheriff can speak more on that if anybody has questions.
What is an LTE radio?
The LTE is the part of the radio that if they're out in a dead area in the county, it will reach the nearest telephone towers to give them signal.
Thank you.
And sadly, there's lots of places, and we all know that.
South County's bad.
There's no signal whatsoever. So again, we're going to have to have increase in that line item. Again, that has nothing to do with us. It's not because we want it out of our hands. The next one is for the contracted services. We're going to need an increase in that as well. Same thing, it's because of cost of maintenance agreements that we have, contracts we have. This one in particular is Leads Online. That is a program that our detectives use daily.
Little bit on Leads Online. If something's stolen, we've got serial numbers guns, TVs, whatever, we can go on Leads Online, put the serial number in, and if it's at a pawn shop, it'll let us know, or we can flag it and look for it.
And too, I guess I should have mentioned this at the onset, the charts that I gave you, like this one, this is the green under the sheriff's office. You can see on that chart what we are asking for in addition, what our current budget. You can see on that chart what we are asking for in addition, what our current budget is, what we're going to ask for for the next year. Is everybody, can anybody follow that? I'm guessing there's no comment and that means yes, okay. Now, in addition to this Leeds Online, we're asking for a little bit more because almost every year, there are increases in these contracts. Now, generally, this time of year, these people we have contracts with, they have already notified me saying we're going to be going up this amount, we're going to go up this amount. Luckily, the only person I've heard from is the Leeds Online people. So I'm hoping that's the only increase, but we might need to have that little window just in case. The last one that we're asking for in that is a little bit of an increase with our in-service and our training. That's solely because of Police One. Now, where that comes in, our post-certified officers, and again, the sheriff can probably speak better to this than I can, but I'm going to give it a whirl, our post-certified officers, they are required every year to have X amount of hours of training. I don't know the hours, I'm just going to say X. They have to have this training. It's just not feasible to take our folks off the road and send them off for three days or five days because a lot of times, we're shorthanded as it is. With Police One, our folks can get the training that they have to have, they can get it online. So that, that is something that is used and used quite frequently. Again, that's, there's an increase with that. Now, what we've discussed, this coming budget year, we're going to try to take advantage of C-TAS trainings. A lot of those, there's no cost at all. Some of them minimal cost, but the majority of those are free, other than maybe travel or per dam. So we're going to try to take advantage of that, but we have to have that Police One. So there's where that increase is. That's the only operational increases that we're asking for through the sheriff's office.
What is Police One?
It's, do you want to go more?
It's an online training with going to the text and class.
They don't actually have to go somewhere to, that's what I was saying, they don't have to go somewhere for three or four days or five days to get training. They can sit behind a desk and get it and still maintain their certification.
We're mandated, we have to have at least 40 hours.
Forty, okay.
That's fine.
Five ones.
Anybody else have a question? Yes ma'am.
I'm backtracking.
No, you're fine.
Instead of eight, we've got four, but they don't need a vehicle.
Court security, no ma'am. Unless you just want to give them some.
Okay.
You never know, we may ask for something later. But seriously, does anybody else have any questions? Yes ma'am.
On tab 33, item 187, the overtime pay.
Mm-hmm.
When you have overtime, is it time and a half or is it just straight time? Curious, I'm sure you've all done the math, but that's a lot of overtime. Would it be better to have a person instead of paying overtime? Instead of, you know, I'm sorry. It's a tab 33, item 187.
Overtime pay.
Where are we at?
That one's six. I mean, I'm just curious, I don't know.
We tried to curb our overtime. We have put our transport officer at certain time. We used to run transport all night long. The transport comes in after 9:00 p.m. We let them hold until the next morning and then we'll pick them up and set up. So we're trying to stop and put overtime.
Sure, I'm just curious, I thought, wow, maybe it'd be better to hire somebody to take that place of, you know, paying someone time and a half. Just, just curious.
That's what we're here for, suggestions and conversation. Does anybody have any other questions about this? Yes ma'am.
I just got a, you're fine, I just got a statement on something. You know, where the sheriff is talking about wanting the additional court officers and needing eight, but going to settle for four and curtailing a lot of this overtime. Some might remember it, I brought it up when it happened, some don't. But during the time when we had our severe weather situation and people were needing to be advised to evacuate and such, instead of paying overtime, our sheriff and chief went on their own and went knocking on doors all night long. They were on the go over 24 hours just so that they could cut it down.
That wasn't, please, wasn't my?
That's what I was saying. We do a lot of stuff on our own.
But that's how they get by with saying we'll make it work is they're putting their hours in as well. And it's just a, just a little tidbit of information so people can think about it. They are cutting it a lot, but it's because of their own dedication and I'm sure Captain Kribley was out with you at that time and it was just putting many, many hours in to keep it under control as far as financially.
Court security, since they're post-certified, if one of your regular patrols vacating, one of those guys can jump in and fill in or?
They could, but we can't spare anybody who lives here today when court's going on. We've got many different courts going on different times, different days. Where a lot of times, myself, the chief are in the criminal court taking a spot of one of them because they're out on the field. There is times that they're available, that they can go out. If they go on weekends, now we're on.
Yeah, I got you.
But if it's, if it's, there are some, this is maybe getting conference or something and they are on patrol, that's more catching up on more effective, it's still a quick word and stuff like that.
Anybody else have a question? Sheriff's Office third. Right now, let's go on to tab, what's your tab 34? It's the pink one and that would be the sex offender registry. Right now, there are 89, maybe more than that today, 89 registered sex offenders in Hamlin County. 59 of those fall under the jurisdiction of the sheriff's office. Those, the others are covered for the city. We have one coordinator, which is Jody Ingram, and we also have four compliance officers, meaning there is an officer from each shift that assists her with this. The one thing we are asking for, excuse me, under the SOR budget, is an increase in travel. And the reason being, there are, well, we all know this, there are people constantly moving into our community. Included in those people are sex offenders that have to report to Jody. She has to start taking responsibility for them. She's going to need some additional help as far as the compliance officers. So we are asking for an increase in travel so these additional compliance officers can get the training they need. Now, a lot of the trainings they go to are free, some are very minimal cost, but what the travel is going to cover is their hotel stay and any per dam.
I think we're only asking for $500.
Mm-hmm, 500.
So we have one compliance officer per shift. What I want is two compliance officers per shift, if that was out, or if we get a lot more sex offenders, we'd be going to their house doing their compliance check. I guess for all of us, we just done a huge compliance check with the TBI and US Marshals and Marktown Police Department, so we want everyone to help. That's, that's something we don't do every year, but we keep a track of them annually.
So that's three offices, three shifts, right?
Now, there's one, we have four shifts and there's one per shift, including the young lady who's the coordinator overall of it.
So three more, three more, four more, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions about that one? All right, let's move on to tab, what's your tab 35, which is the jail. And on the handout I gave you, it's the yellow. The only thing we're actually asking for operationally-wise for the jail is an increase under food supplies. Now, it kind of goes without saying, once we get into the new facility, we're going to have a higher number of inmates. We all know the cost of food has gone up. So that, right now, is the only thing we're asking for. Now, all these other things that we had asked for last year that we ended up not getting because we haven't moved in yet, that's going to continue. That will, that will stay in the budget across the board. So we're not asking for anything additional, again, like additional uniforms or additional training or addition, anything like that. In the jail budget, we are solely asking for an increase in food supplies. Anybody have any questions about that?
I'd like permission to email you. I have several questions, but I won't get into them because I'm sure most of them are not interested. But as far as your prisoners, if they're, shall I say, pregnant, there's a higher nutritional effort. If they're diabetic, there's difference. So I will email you my questions. I won't hassle you. I'd like some answers though. Thank you.
Just give an update, he's in recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on down to what is your tab 36, which, and I combined these on the little handout I gave you. Number 36 is the workhouse, which is also the litter program. And then, of course, number 40, which is inspection and regulation, what we refer to as civil service board. And of course, on those two budgets, we aren't asking for any kind of increase. Those are just going to stay the same. But does anybody have any questions about either of those? We have the same gentlemen serving on the civil service board, Dwayne Evans, David Beckner, and then also Ronald Spiller. Did I pronounce his name right? All right then, shall we move on? Okay, what will be your tab number 58, which is the red one in the handout I gave you, and that's narcotics. As you can imagine, there is an ever-growing upswing in the work that our narcotics folks are having to do. Ever-growing upswing. But we are only asking for one operational increase under narcotics. That is going to be due to a Casper system. That has to do with surveillance that they do. It has to do with their informants. I don't know that we really need to elaborate on it.
It's, it's something needed to do, some undercover operations.
TBI, if I'm not mistaken, they also use this, so.
We've been there for a while.
Yeah, and it's very effective, so. But that's the only thing we're asking for, the operational increase in narcotics. No questions to that? Well, something else that, you know, that I think we need to address, as you guys are all aware, we have our 18 SROs in all of the schools, which we have those through state grant. Now, the additional five SROs that we have, we pay for those out of the sheriff's office budget. Now, we were very blessed in the sense that the school board, as well as the city, at the onset, they, and I will say shared, they shared funds with us to, with the upstart cost of that. Of course, that money's not going to last forever. But even with that, we are not asking for any additional funds pertaining to the SROs for equipment or supplies. Hopefully, at this point, we've got everything covered, so we're not asking anything else with that. Now, I'm sure, at least I hope you're aware of the fact that this past school year, we introduced, and I will say successfully reintroduced, the DARE program into the school system. We started out with two certified DARE instructors. They're both SROs. Now, even though they're both SROs, the supplies and the equipment that they had to have for the DARE program could not be taken out of SRO funding. We took care of that, so that came out of our budget. Now, because of the success of this DARE program, they're wanting more children to be reached. And when I say they, I'm talking the school, I'm talking about parents, the community in general. They're wanting more kids to be reached. They're asking for additional DARE officers. So this upcoming year, we've got two more SROs that are going to be certified instructors. Because there is a very high cost that goes along with these DARE programs, the supplies, they're not cheap. I'm the one that orders them, they are not cheap. The captain Kribley and the sheriff went in front of the opioid abatement, the opioid abatement grant and were approved, I'm assuming you guys approved that, $10,000, which is going to go towards the DARE program. And then Mr. Bunch with the school system, he knows the value of this program and they've also agreed to help out with an additional $15,000.
What this money goes to is we buy brochures in English and Spanish to give out to the kids. It also gives the graduates a DARE t-shirt. It gets Darren the stuffed animal line they give out to the SA winners. This money goes to provide that stuff to the kids.
And, and a lot of it's motivational stuff for the kids, some of the things he mentioned. And like you said, those workbooks, they're in English and Spanish. It's ridiculous how much those things cost, but it's worth it. Every penny of it is worth it. There's also, they get medagins for the children. And a lot of these things that they have, these kids will continue with this DARE program, stuff that they learned, because I know there's other organizations that go into the school system and they kind of pick up some of the things that our DARE officers are teaching in the fourth grade and they're going to carry it on through.
We have two certified instructors, like Michelle said, that we're waiting till after the school year and after they go through their in-service, we're going to need two more officers to be certified. And they're targeting last year's FitRacks.
Anybody have any questions about that? Again, we're not asking for any money. I just, I just wanted to let you guys know what we are doing to keep from spending money, spending the taxpayers' money. Yes.
Are they in the elementary or middle school, the DARE program?
It's actually in the elementary school. Now, some of our SROs, actually, that aren't certified, they will touch on some of the DARE topics. I know one of our certified instructors, Jim Ballinger, he's at East High School. He also took some of the workbooks and he was incorporating DARE with some of the high school students. I mean, even though he was a certified instructor, but still, they're, they're trying to get DARE across the board with all of our kids, all the age ranges.
Talking about the instructors or them in the elementary?
Just the program.
Elementary, yeah.
They target this year's FitRacks.
In every school?
I know we got, we had two.
And it's a 10-week course that these, and a lot of times, the fact they're DARE, or excuse me, SROs, some of these, we have schools with two SROs. So while they're out training these kids, instructing them in the DARE program, the other SROs will pick up and cover their slack while they're offside. Anybody have any questions, anything else?
I have one. Am I understanding you correctly that it takes 10 weeks to certify each one?
No, it's 10 weeks for the children, the program for the kids.
How long does it take the officer to?
One hour a week for 10 weeks.
Oh, the officer is two weeks.
Two weeks, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't.
The certification for the, for the DARE instructor?
Yes, sir.
But it's for the, for the children, it's one hour a week for 10 weeks.
Thank you.
And for the, the officers to become certified, they have to go to Nashville for two weeks.
Any other questions?
Okay, so those are the operational things that we're asking for. And as you can see, we're keeping it at an absolute minimum as best we can. But conversation between the sheriff, the chief, the captain, and then some of us, there's some other things that we would like to address and hopefully get remedied, if not tonight, at some point in time in these meetings. One of the many uphill battles that we are dealing with, almost on a daily basis, are vehicles. We have vehicles that are constantly breaking down. We spend a substantial amount of money on repairs for these vehicles. They're very high mileage. As you can imagine, they're on the road constantly. Somebody mentioned vehicles earlier, and they were, I can't remember who they were talking about, but it was talking about how the vehicles, how they're constantly, all the use of these vehicles. Well, take whatever that was and multiply it by a deputy. Anyway, so we're spending all this money on these repairs. A lot of times, when these vehicles are in the shop, that means there's a deputy without a vehicle. So then there's one car that's been shared by two individuals, which means that car's on the road 24/7. A car that's on the road that much, that in turn leads to a whole nother group of issues. So after some consideration, and again, the sheriff can address this further if you need him to, we are actually asking to be able to purchase two new Explorers in this upcoming budget year. Yes ma'am.
I live next to the city garage and when I pull out of the drive and in there, in their garage is, they're working on this garbage truck, that fire engine and that police car. Can we not? We're sharing, we're sharing the jail, we're sharing the schools, we're sharing the landfill. Could we not say, hey, you guys, here comes our vehicle?
I'd love to.
How do we do that? How do we do that?
Think about it, if when you leave and their bay is full of all these other vehicles, when would they have time to get to ours?
Well, you know.
If they share their garage, how is that?
Miss Ager, we need to put a bee in a bonnet somewhere.
Hey, Ma'am.
I mean, it's, it's amazing to me that they're willing for us to educate them, to take them in, to, everybody takes everybody and it takes, but when it comes to something that crucial, they're not sharing the load, I guess I'd say.
Is those vehicles fully equipped?
I've got some pricing on some fully equipped vehicles, uh, Dodge Chargers. We've not had a Dodge Charger, it's a hundred thousand miles, we have major issues, motor issues. So we checked with the Ford Explorers and on the state grant, or the state bid, a fully equipped Ford Explorer 2025. a fully-equipped Ford Explorer twenty-twenty-five is fifty-six thousand seven eighty-eight. We looked at the Durango as well, SUV. And again, we've not had good luck out of motors. The oil-cold system or plastic, they're going to have around fifty thousand miles. But, the fully-equipped Durango is fifty thousand five hundred and five.
What's availability of the Explorers?
Well, the fact that the Chargers, they make no twenty-twenty-four, or no twenty-twenty-five cars coming out. Mind me saying, I talked to Captain Moore today, they're coming out with twenty-twenty-six M nine-six engine. I know nothing about it, it's new. They're not even available. So, what was your question, sorry?
The Explorers, what's the availability of them timeframe?
I'll have to check, I talked with Captain Moore, he's... He talked with the bids, but I feel pretty certain that we could get them. Question?
Yes. Is that what the troopers drive?
Yes. I spoke with PHC subdivision, they have some good luck out of the Ford Explorers. And I think they know the way to do the garbage before. You end the Durango, it's a new one. They're using Ford Explorers, they're hot-hoes. The Ford Explorers, they were...
Any other questions about two new Explorers that we really would like to have? That we need to have? Okay, so, in addition to the issue with the vehicles, we also have a big issue with hiring new employees and maintaining the employees we have. Now, I can say this because I work at the sheriff's office. There's a great team of people that work there. There's a really strong camaraderie with everybody. Everybody gets along, there's loyalty there. Loyalty's only gonna take you so far. People are gonna go where the paycheck is. People need to support their families, and they're gonna go where they can get that. Now, right now, we mentioned earlier that we desperately need the four, eight preferably, but we'll take the four, full-time court security. As we stand right now, this moment, we need thirty people in the jail. Thirty additional people in the jail. Now, of course, we talked about the fact, because of the size, the layout of the new Justice Center, we have got to have that. But in regard to these folks working in the jail, we have got to have that, or this jail's not gonna be certified. That's one of the main reasons that we build a new jail, is so we could be certified. If we don't have enough staff, it's just not gonna happen.
And I'll address some staffing issues here later on, about thirty, but that's...
And one thing that we've, I mean, we've not just sit and hoped people would come knock on the door and ask for an application, we have actively tried to bring people in. We printed up brochures, we have distributed them all throughout the community, we go to job fairs. The sheriff and one of the detectives, he went to a job fair in Middlesbrough, Kentucky. We have been to job fairs, we have done that, we have been, we've had numerous social media blasts. We're hiring, we're hiring, trying to encourage, because you know, that's the best way to reach people now. Numerous social media blasts to bring people in. Our next venture, coming up in June, we're gonna have a career fair for the sheriff's office at Rose Center. The bottom line is, if people aren't applying, we can't hire anybody. I mean, if they're not coming to us, we can't hire them. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, but let's suppose you can. Okay. You know, can you say, "This is all the inmates we can handle"?
Well, I don't know, the evil world that we live in, I don't know that that's...
You can't stop crime. And when they come to jail, we have to accept it.
We can't say, "We're maxed out, you gotta go back home."
There's no such thing as, "You can't come in our jail unless you've got a..."
But suppose there was a thing, I'm, this is, okay. What if you said, "Wait a minute, let me check with Hancock, they've got an opening." Just like if I were to go check into a hotel, you know?
The operational costs are skyrocketing. We're taking Hancock County, then two days, you're gonna bring it back for a bond here, you're taking it back to Hancock County, then come back to the court here, you gotta go back and forth to get it.
May I ask a question? Are you having anybody put in for the jobs at all?
We have, and I'll get into that with some salary stuff. It's not cut out for just anybody. We've had some that apply that have stayed, we have some that apply that has not stayed, that has left pretty soon. We've had some that asked for the bathroom, that, this ain't for me, and never come back.
And we've also heard, sadly, we've heard comments, I mean, people will come in, and it's like, they're gonna be a great candidate, they passed their psychological exam, they're geared up, ready to go, they're there for two or three days, they're there for two or three months, and then they just quit. And I'm sure Captain Law's can attest to this, I know the chief can, I know the sheriff can. We're hearing comments from these people, like, "I don't make enough money to put up with this." You can fill in the blank.
I can believe that.
Excuse my ignorance, if it's been brought before, but is there, like, bonus signing bonuses that have been offered in pass for, I mean, the world today, wherever you work at, that supplements hourly rates a lot of times. It doesn't fix it, but it's attempt, I don't know if that's ever been...
We have not done that, and I'm not a fan of that. I don't think, to give a sign-on bonus, get somebody to come, well, better boys or loyal employees that's been with...
Amen.
That's, I don't think that's a good morale booster. I mean, it's a good, it's a good question. And we see the signs, that the chief and I go to Nashville, fifteen thousand dollar sign-on bonus for the state for three years. That's not good for your loyal employees.
And that's one thing we wanna do also. Again, we talked about loyalty, we need to take care of our people. Yes, sir.
Could some of them be leaving because of the current jail, or...
I'm gonna say that's possible, but, we take them over to the new facility and let them see what's coming short. So, in their training, they go to the new facility, they...
One thing too, if I may add, you know, we've got these new hires coming in. Now, again, we've maintained some of them, we've got some good folks, we just don't have enough. But in addition to these new hires coming in saying, "Ah, this money, it's not worth it for me", we're losing seasoned people. We have literally lost somebody because of the pay in every single division at the sheriff's office. The patrol, detective, narcotics, in the jail. We recently lost a jail employee, somebody who was not only bilingual, but she could also speak sign language. That's a very valuable employee in the jail. Now, when you've got folks going to, I'm just gonna throw this out there, the new probation office, with no backgrounds, no anything, they're just going in from scratch. When they can go in there starting out at twenty dollars an hour, how can we compete with that? We can't compete with the fast-food chicken place down the street.
That's true.
I get that, I mean, you put a gun on or an apron.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've got some, some numbers here I wanna share with you all, and some wise things to say. Once they leave us, I wanna bring them in and do an act of...
And I think too, the bottom line with this, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, I think people need to feel appreciated, and I think they need to feel their worth. I mean, you guys have toured this jail. You don't know the extent of what our people deal with, but I think you kinda have a grasp of it. I wouldn't wanna work in a jail, I couldn't. I don't know that you guys would wanna work in a jail. And the people that do apply, that do stick with it, they need to be compensated for it. Yeah, and, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna say something to me. Now, one thing that has been done, and you'll see this in that handout I gave you, the sheriff has put a lot of work into this, Captain Cribbly, the chief, we've all put a lot of work into this, getting salaries from surrounding counties. Salaries that, I mean, these people do basically the same thing our folks do. Maybe not to the degree, I mean, you think about Hamlin County, and we know this, we're the hub of everything. You know, we're right here at eighty-one, and forty, and twenty-five. What we discovered is that these people, doing basically the same job in these surrounding counties, they're being compensated way more than what our folks do. Now, even though the benefits in these other counties are probably, I don't know, but they're probably not as good as ours, even though they probably don't have a free clinic that they can go to. And even though they're having to drive out of county, they are still going to other counties to apply instead of right here where they live, simply because of the pay. And the chart that the sheriff made mention of, it's in your, it's at the back of your budgets. It's got a breakdown of the different counties, the starting for corrections officers, as well as patrol, I'll let you take that as well.
I reached out personally to each sheriff, Green County, Granger County, Hawkins County, Top County, Sevier County, and... So, if you look at the top in the red, Gregson's starting Green County, eighteen eighty-three, that's a new price. Gregson's starting Granger County, nineteen seventy. Hawkins County, twenty-two twelve. Top County, eighteen twenty-seven. Jefferson County, they do, didn't give me a, by hour, they start out at forty-five thousand. Corrections in Sevier County, which I know is the first county, they're making twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour. Within three years with Sevier County, they're making fifty-two cents. You come down to Hamlin County, our starting pay for our jail staff, our correction offices, is seventeen fifty, we're the lowest around. So, you go on down to patrol, Green County, twenty-two seventy-eight an hour. Granger County, twenty-seventy. Pro and Hawkins County, they pay their corrections the same as they pay their pro, pro from now, twenty-two twelve. Top County, twenty-three oh seven. Sevier County, twenty-six oh three, after three years, they're... Down to Hamlin County, it started at eighteen ninety-eight. They're lower than every county around us. And I can't compete with that. That is some of the problems that we have with people. I know, we're gonna be able to retain some officers or some jailers with the new facility, but we're not, we're not know where they're going, and they're doing insane stuff.
Do we have longevity for those that are in?
After three years, longevity does kick in, seventy-five dollars a year. I checked with some of these others, some of the benefit packages, some of them is similar to ours, some are lower. I know Jefferson County, if you're single, your health insurance is free, where there's only fifty bucks to pay here, if there's a spree, they have longevity pay. Top County has about the same as us, the only thing they don't have is the free plan. They have longevity pay, they have same insurance, so they pay thirty-seven.
Hey, Chad? What does the city pay?
I don't have the cities. Now, starting out, there are probably three, I've got some of it. Their entry level's at forty-one thousand seven sixty-six. But where there's a huge discrepancy, or not a discrepancy, a huge gap, is once you get out of entry level, in their supervision, they're making probably twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars more than we are. If you're in supervision, if you're sergeant, lieutenant, or captain, even their defect division, they're between twenty and thirty thousand dollars more than we are.
And I mean, I agree with you, and, you know, this is not just the police department, this is everywhere around, because we're facing it in the food industry. What we're seeing today is, the younger people, the package doesn't matter to them. They're not worried about insurance, they're not worried about anything but the dollar amount. And you know, and I'll be honest, and I'll say this, and I do think our, our police force is underpaid. We start our managers out with no experience in the restaurant industry at more money than we pay our sheriff's department. Entry level, we're at forty-two to forty-six thousand a year. Okay? I agree with Chad. You know, we're starting our sixteen-year-old employees out at twelve to thirteen dollars an hour in the restaurant industry. Okay? We've gotta pay our officers more. If not, we've got two different problems, it's not just this. How are we gonna staff the jail? But if we got people leaving because of the dollar, I agree, we have to, I wouldn't do their job for what they get paid. I mean, we really need to sandwich Chad, and as hard as it's gonna hurt us and hit us, we're gonna have to look at the pay on it.
Any other questions?
If you flip over one in your book, that I've got a, you don't have a hot car, it is coming through the front. Just give you some, some of the things that our officers do. Last year, they answered almost seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand each. In that, it was twenty-nine missing persons in court. They do the reports, you turn over the package, and they have a search, and twenty-nine of them, they worked a hundred and fifty-one wrecks with injuries. Eight attempted suicides, eighty-one suicide threats. And one kidnapping. Says in this, we had no murders, but that's not the case, we're about to make federal court. We're selling drugs that killed five people, so we're just, that number, we're missing five. We had five reported rapes, one stabbing, five shootings. Officers answered two hundred and sixty-five domestic calls, sixty fires. There were seventy-five, I think, homes that were dead. And seventy-four assaults. Eight hundred and thirty-nine high-priority calls out of the federal court. If you keep that, the chart with the pay, and I'll address some of the issues with the jail. If you can remember back in twenty-twenty, back then, Mayor Bill Breton requested Jim Hartwell's seat ass to conduct a jail staffing analysis. On completion, Mr. Hart told to increase the number of employees. At that time, we had fifty-six yet. After Mr. Hart's recommendation, that number of employees went from fifty-six to one hundred and twenty. Operationally secure, that's an increase of seventy-two percent. Upon taking office, I felt the Hammond County Jail could operate with few less employees than what Mr. Hart said we needed. After analyzing and revising Mr. Hart's staffing analysis, my initial proposal was I thought we could operate with ninety-seven. Understanding that that number was not feasible, more employees could be added if needed. This number was later increased by adding three more additional employees, for a total of a hundred employees that I estimated that we needed to safely and properly operate the new Hammond County Jail that is with minimum inmates, not a maximum amount of inmates. So, we decreased that recommendation by twenty-eight employees then. In the months that have followed, since the approval of the staffing analysis, I submitted, my staff and I attempted to hire a number of employees that I feel was needed to operate the jail. During my time as sheriff, several correction officers had been hired, but they're not all, or hired, has remained there. Several have left due to employment elsewhere because the pay was better than what they were making here, and that's what I was talking about with X interview. That's where, that's where they're going. I've lost a couple to probation. One that was, that Michelle was talking about, was bilingual and sign. She left our jail to go for newly, she's never been a probation officer, making more money. I lost another one to another probation office out of Sevier County. So, one of our officers was lost by TBI investigation that I launched, and he ended up being indicted. Counting the number of employees that have left and the number of positions that have yet to be filled, I still have thirty positions to be filled after we cut that twenty-eight. Because these unfilled positions, this year, I have returned to the general fund from those positions, one million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents from unfilled positions. And I know this money will have to be reallocated in order to pay the employees if and when the positions are filled. The way things are going right now, I have very few individuals applying for the job, once they find out the pay. We have done job fairs, posted on social media monthly. We have hired consultants, the handouts that Michelle was talking about, distributed brochures, it seems no one works, works, works in a jail. Again, I've, I've got some notes here about even the newly formed Hammond County probation officer patients, who are always an hour. And I can't compete with that. Uh, myself, my employees, they do appreciate the raise this body's given and passed to this jail below everybody else. However, the rate of Hammond County Jail is still the lowest paid in all surrounding counties. In my opinion, people work two things, that's money and benefits. If the money's not right, then they don't apply. And if they're offered better pay elsewhere, they leave us. I feel like a training ground. We'll hire them, get them trained, they leave us for more money. Our benefit package is good, uh, probably one of the best in surrounding counties, and the same with them. But the bottom line, people are looking forward to all our number of pay checks. Bottom line, we can't compete with other jails around us. One thing that I'm concerned about is, Governor Manley wants the new jail complete, and we're understaffed, we're failing inspection. A failed inspection means the jail won't be certified. Without certification, our goal is to receive tier one and tier two accreditation status, which will mean more money on the board bill. If you get tier one, it's six dollars a day more than the forty-one they're giving us. If you get tier two, it's twelve dollars more than the forty-one dollars they're giving us. So it could actually bring in quite a bit more money. With all that to say on this matter, there's one thing to mention. The only explanation I have for keeping employees right now is they're loyal. They're loyal to each of their community, their coworkers, their profession.
Sheriff Mullins, how many, when you say minimum amount of prisoners, what is, you consider the minimum amount in the new?
We're averaging captain three fifty, four hundred. Right now. But keep in mind, the recovery courts got probably sixty-five or seventy inmates out from Hammond County. Jail to work's got twelve. Seven to twelve at all times. We also have a mental health court that's got about eight. And if it wasn't for these programs, they'd be sitting in jail. That would bump us up to four fifty, five hundred.
Mr. Horner.
Plus you've not done a roundup in four years.
The what?
You haven't done a roundup in four years either.
Plus we've not done a roundup in four years. We've got a lot of drug indictments waiting.
Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Quick question. You said, uh, minimum inmates was three fifty, and for a hundred officers, a hundred and twenty-eight? Just to make sure that I'm on the same page with you, sir. How many officers did you think you would need to handle the three hundred and fifty minimum?
Jim Hart's proposal was a hundred and twenty-eight officers.
I remember that.
We cut it by twenty-eight, so we've got a hundred officers, correction officers.
So you think with a hundred, you can handle the three fifty?
Right now. But we're thirty short of that hundred.
So you're running with seventy officers right now, am I correct?
Yes.
Oh God, that's dangerous. I'm sorry.
Mr. Richardson. How much money you need to get them, to get the paper?
I'm asking for a ten percent raise across the board. For the, all employees.
Now, would that be just our regular people like our jailers, or are we talking about administrative as well that makes quite a bit more?
I'm talking across the board, administrative and all.
Mr. Richards.
Uh, Mr. Sheriff, uh, that figure that you have, the hundred, a hundred and twenty-eight or whatever, that's dictated by state regulation based on the number of, of inmates, is that?
That's fair, okay. Yes.
Okay. The, the other thing I want to address, if you don't care, you, you were asking earlier about nutrition. If you remember, we approved a vendor package for the food that has a minimum of twenty-five hundred calories, something like that, a day. And it has nutritionist on staff that, uh, supports that, all those questions you were asking about.
But we need to look into that.
Yeah, we've already approved that.
Well, I don't doubt that, but we need to look into it.
Any other questions?
I've got, I've got to have at least ten percent to retain what I've got and recruit new employees. Is, what we're doing is not working. The mon, the money's not there.
Ms. Allen.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is the toughest that I'm going to say. What if we did that for the officers who are in the jail right now? Uh, the, the, you know, the guards and, uh, and the new guys, and maybe not administration?
I can't do without any of them. I'm asking for ten percent across the board, is what I'm needing. And they do. And we only have, uh, five girls working in office. Uh, Michelle's one of them, I couldn't make it without her. Uh, and she spoke about Jody, sex offenders, all the stuff she does, the records.
Sheriff, I want to thank you and Michelle for coming today. Believe me, we appreciate everything you do. Uh, I'm proud of our Hammond County Sheriff's Department, and, uh, we will take all of this in consideration. We've got a lot of hard decisions to make. We appreciate you. At this time, we will go to four G, that's the general fund revenue. Be presented by County Mayor Chris Tuchel. I think you had a copy of the, of that on your desk earlier today, Commissioners.
All right, Commissioners, uh, tonight is our Hammond County General Fund Revenue Report. We touched on this first in the overview just a few days ago. I believe it was last Monday that we discussed it. And our revenue sources include our property taxes, our sales tax, will tax, and county fee offices. They include state grants, federal through state agency grants, and transfers from other funds. But as we go down that list, we'll start first with our county property taxes. This year, the budgeted amount for property tax is the same as last year due to our reappraisal that we're going through. Our reassessment is revenue neutral. So already we know that our revenue should not increase greatly on the assessment. Does that make sense? Okay, the revenue's there. We do have a decrease in tax revenue from prior year collections because there are fewer delinquent property taxes. Our trustee has been very active, I think it's at ninety-six percent collections right now, and may go up to ninety-eight percent before the year is out. So he's doing a fine job on that, but so that revenue is not there as it has been in the past. So the overall budgeted increase of sixteen thousand dollars in local revenue for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. There's some other points to be made in that. There is one, one item on revenues that may actually increase. Because of reassessment, uh, how that works, we've been in, uh, there's a ratio used for personal property. Right now, this past year, it's at point six-two. And, and, and that will equalize and go back to one this year for personal property. So we may see an increase of some of those per, personal property funds that will come back. And I think that's projec, it could be, you know, a good little bump there, but we won't know until all this is said and done what that may be. And, uh, as always, we're trying to estimate our revenues low and our expenses high. I don't want to do it the other way and then surprise everyone and not have the revenue that we said we would have. So we're just trying to be prepared for that. But if we'll move on to, uh, outside of property taxes, we have our licenses. We've experienced a decrease in cable TV franchise fees due to more households that are streaming now. And we expect this decrease to, uh, further decrease in the years to come. TV services going away, and therefore tho, those revenues will be decreasing on that. So fines and forfeitures and penalties overall slide increase mainly due to fees collected through our drug court. Fees, minor decrease in recreational fees as a result of our camper, uh, camping rental changes at Cherokee Park. Educate, uh, yeah. Our educational charges, two thousand revenue expected from the newly formed probation court services. Uh, again, we, we have began a probation court service. Last year, we funded that through opioid abatement money. This coming year, we're hoping it stands on its own. That, we do not know yet, but we're hoping it stands on its own. And, and obviously, those are questions we'll have to, uh, come across if it does not. Other local revenues, uh, we have decrease in rental income from the former space that we had rented by Judge Boniface. So we, we did away with our annex, um, our county clerk. Moved all her operations in one building. We saving money, but yet we lose revenue where we had rented that space to Judge Boniface. Uh, county official fees decrease. We've had a decrease in fee income from county offices. The majority of that is attributed to the clerk and master for less delinquent property tax collections. Public safety grant, miss that somewhere. Our public safety grants, we have increased, uh, increase shown in health department programs, but this increase is offset by increased expense for health department salary. So overall, it's a wash in that. We, we've gained some, but yet because of the salary increases, which is across the board, we're, we're, it's, it's just a flat even on that. Other state revenues, kept state revenue from prisoner boarding the same, but we might see a slight increase if we do, once we open up the new facility and some of those inmates. We could see an increase in that revenue. Contributions from other governments, largest decrease in budgeted revenue from, uh, for the next year comes from the lack of contribution from the city, government, and the school for our SRO program. Last year, we had received up to eight hundred, well, we received eight hundred thousand dollars from the school system and a hundred and fifty thousand from the city during the past two fiscal years for that program. And this year, those funds will not be there. So that was, uh, really a big part of our revenue decrease for this year. In summary, our overall anticipated reduction in revenue of eight hundred and eight thousand dollars from one year to the next. Still some unknowns about our property tax, just as I, as said, as we, uh, as the revenue due to reappraisal process. There, there's still unknowns. We know it's revenue neutral, but there's still unknowns. We don't know exactly where that's going to go, especially with the nu, it is neutral, but we could see that bump in the revenue from our personal property that I was explaining. And personal property understandings within our, uh, the industries, that, that, their machines and what they do. That, that's the personal property that we're referring to. Is there any questions?
Just comment, all, all businesses have a personal property tax, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I know that. And I'm saying the biggest portion of that is our industry.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Year over year, we, we do see flat revenues. We're just trying to be cautious of what that may look like. So as this body moves forward with everything, uh, Chairman of the Budget Committee, Mr. Long, he'll address how, how we'll proceed. Yet, uh, you just keep in mind, we've got a lot of expenses in front of us with flat revenues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any, anyone with any other questions? Thank you. If you'll notice at the bottom of that, um, our process, on May the twenty-ninth, we will begin budget deliverer, excuse me. Deliver. Something down my throat. Uh, we'll be delivering the budget on May the twenty-ninth. We'll start at five o'clock. Uh, we will be getting the agenda out for that meeting of how we will proceed. On the June the twelfth, if everything goes right, we'll wrap up and, with any open items at five o'clock in this courtroom. And then the June the sixteenth, the Budget Committee will recommend a budget to the Commission. Uh, I would like to say we have some hard decisions to be made. This is a year where it's not easy that we just sit here and we say everything's going to be easy for us this year on the budget. I think everyone needs to be concentrating and, and understanding that there's a lot of hard decisions to make. We have a responsibility to everyone in this county to do the best job that we can. And I'm quite sure this Commission is up for it. Is all minds clear? See you Thursday, twenty-ninth at five o'clock.
If you're going to, are you going to?
Yes.